Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Wednesday, October 28th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, James Misick. The following is a piece of legislation up for discussion by Pittsburgh City Council. Bill Number 684, Resolution Approving a New Institutional Master Plan Under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article Two, Chapter 905, Section 905.03.D and Article Seven, Chapter 922, Section 922.12.G for West Penn Hospital Institutional Master Plan Dated August 17th, 2020, on property zoned EMI Educational Medical Institution District In the Eighth Ord Seventh Council District. Thank you and have a great day.
Okay. Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Wednesday, October 28th, 2020, relative to Bill 2020-0684. Sorry if you've already heard me say that, but I'll say it again. My name is Deborah Gross and I am the Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title of the bill?
Absolutely. Bill 684, Resolution Approving a New Institutional Master Plan Under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article Two, Chapter 905 and Article Seven, Chapter 922, for West Penn Hospital Institutional Master Plan Dated August 17th, 2020, on property zoned EMI Educational Medical Institution Ord Seventh.
I had to say, Madam Clerk, your volume is not great. So this is in case it was difficult to understand, again, it's Bill 2020-0684 and it is regarding the Institutional Master Plan for West Penn Hospital. And for the record, do we have other council members with us yet today? I don't see any on my screen. Nope, I don't seem to. And we will possibly be joined by them shortly. They can come in and out of the public hearing. We do have a presentation about the Institutional Master Plan and usually in these public hearings, we allow on the people who were joined us, usually it's at city council table, here it's in webinar format, to present the plan for the viewers and the public's information overview. And then we do have, I see only three registered speakers and those speakers, if you'll bear with us and stay on the line with us, you will have your three minutes after we have the presentation of the Institutional Master Plan. So I have a variety of people on my screen. I see the President of West Penn Hospital, good to see you, President Andrews, and some other people on his team. Madam Clerk, I don't really have the speakers, I have the public comments names, but I don't have the speakers who are at the table with us. If you want to email me that, but for now, I will introduce and give the table to President Ron Andrews. And then President Andrews, you can help us figure out who comes next.
Sorry to jump in.
Corey, are you presenting first?
Would you like to have the planning staff present?
That's true. That would be normal, isn't it? I just couldn't see everybody and I see you there now.
And actually, I'm Corey Layman, I'm the zoning administrator. And it's great to be here, but I'd actually like to ask my colleague Kate Rakas to go ahead and give the presentation for planning.
Sure. So I just want to give just a brief introduction before we turn it over to West Penn. So this is an application for a new institutional master plan for West Penn Hospital. It's zoning application, DCP MPZC 2019-00075. This received a positive recommendation with conditions at Planning Commission back in July of 2020. The conditions related to sidewalk width and building massing and these changes have already been incorporated into the Institutional Master Plan document. So these conditions have been satisfied. Notices were mailed for this hearing 21 days in advance as required by code, but due to the current state laws around COVID, notices were not posted on the property. Finally, I just want to note, and I'm sure you'll see this in the presentation as well, there are several properties on Grove Street which are within the EMI zoning district but are not part of the institution. So as such, they're not part of the Institutional Master Plan.
Hi, Kate, are you, are you ready?
I'm finished. Yes.
Hi, I'm Dusty Elias Kirk and I am Council for Allegheny Health Network and West Penn Hospital. I just wanted to thank you all for hearing us today. We have been working on this master plan for two years and with me is Ron Andro, the President of West Penn Hospital, Brian Johnson, the Chief Medical Officer, and Robin Zernick is there as well, Chief of Operations. Cindy Jampel is also with us from Trans Associates. Melanie Como Harris is with us and she's the one that has put together, the architect for this Institutional Master Plan that you're going to see. So I'm going to turn it over to Ron at this point. Before I do though, I'd like to ask if there were any comments at the end that West Penn could answer, we'd like to reserve that time. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Dusty, and thank you to the city council members as well as to the Planning Commission, both for this time and for this opportunity. The first slide here really addresses, again, an optical view of what is that Institutional Master Plan perspective as it relates to how we're zoned in and around West Penn Hospital. This is a beautiful sunny day. You'll note kind of to the upper part of the diagram here, a presentation picture, West Penn Hospital and then all the footprint that looks off of both Liberty, Grove Street, Friendship, Matilda and Millville Avenues. Next slide. Our objectives really were to move forward with how access and all the other dynamics of cost containment and other sides of how to the community, we could always be both service and also readily available as a community would need healthcare services and needs, both for our inpatients as well as our outpatients. We also are sensitive to the parking needs of our regional area. We've heard loud and clear from our community some of the concerns they've had. So you'll see that incorporated in our objectives. We also need to be thinking more about the modernization and green footprint of West Penn Hospital. So you'll see to our presentation how we've addressed those objectives. And then we have never really had a front door to the hospital, so there is a notation of that as well, as how the public could not be confused any longer as to what is the main entrance to the hospital. And again, our operational efficiency to really cause ourselves to meet modern standards is threaded throughout our document. I'd like to introduce Dr. Brian Johnson, who's going to talk a little bit about our clinical profile and a little bit more about the organization.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate the opportunity to present today. So as this slide reflects, we've experienced very significant growth here at West Penn over the past five years. Presently, we have 350 licensed beds to support that clinical need. We have 1,000 physicians on staff approximately, in addition to 2,000 staff members for additional support. Presently, we discharge about 14,500 patients per year, which of note is a significant increase from approximately 2015, when that discharge number appeared to be about 9,000. In addition, there were about 4,200 babies born here every year and included in that, there were about 900 discharges from our Level Three Neonatal Intensive Care Unit, where we provide care for our smallest patients. On the outpatient side, there's about 150 to 160,000 outpatient discharges and in addition to that, 25,000 patients are seen through our emergency department on a yearly basis. Finally, we perform approximately 14,000 surgeries per year, both on the inpatient side and the outpatient side. And again, this is a tremendous increase from 2015, when that number was closer to 8,000 or 9,000 surgical procedures. Next slide, please. So looking at our vision over the next 10 years, it continues the same trend toward growth. We would expect the need for our licensed bed cohort increase to approximately 600 and to support that clinical need, a 5% increase in physicians and a 12% increase in the number of staff. Most importantly, we want to ensure we increase the access for our patients as well as utilize a patient-centered approach as we increase our volume of services, including our current footprint of OB-GYN, primary care and oncology, as well as some of our very subspecialized services, including neurosurgery, our Autoimmunity Institute, diabetes and surgery. And most importantly, as we provide the increased access and support the necessary growth, we want to ensure it's very patient-centric, such that many of these services are in an institute model, such that they are located under one roof, so a patient can present to our facility and have care provided for potentially multiple subspecialties without having to attend multiple appointments in order to achieve that need. Next slide.
This notes are, oh, I'm sorry.
So pass it back to you, Ron.
Great, thanks, Brian. This notes our 10-year plan visually. So you see in different colors here, again, the parking garage structure that we're looking towards, a dynamic as it relates to a medical office clinic that we would like to further expand on our campus, also to the hospital spaces that you see here for inpatient and various hospital-based outpatient services that are noted in the green. And then our perspective on our plant to modernize that and cause it to be even more energy efficient and also too sensitive to both, you know, the dynamics of the environment, both for pollution as well as noise. So and also too, we're very sensitive in this diagram as well to the watershed and all the other environmental concerns that currently, you know, as part of our IMP, we've tried to fully incorporate. Next slide. The dimension here is to show you another view from Liberty, Grove Street, Friendship, Matilda and Millville as to how the new buildings could look. And again, we tried to be sensitive to our community and neighborhoods. Again, we've tried to set the buildings back. We've tried to cause them to be stair-stepped in their presentation. Again, we want this to be a blend with our community as well as, you know, in a static that helps us to both modernize and be very sensitive to the environment concerns that are part of our IMP and what it is as our zoning footprint. So again, you see the colors here and also to the dimensions as the hospital, you know, could present to the future. Next slide. This is our 25-year perspective. You see some additional infield space. In the yellow is what was just proposed for the 10-year plan. In the green and the kind of yellowish-brown is what we also see as, again, the hospital expansion for infield space. And then we have a very robust program here for simulation for our healthcare professionals as well as what we do with our school of nursing. So what you see in the upper portion of this is an expansion to what our educational needs can be, you know, for our campus. Next slide. I'd like to turn this over to Cindy Jampel from Trans Associates, who's worked with us on access for both motor vehicle as well as, you know, other means of coming to the campus. So Cindy.
You're on mute, Cindy.
Not anymore. Okay. From Trans Associates, although I'm labeled as the third Melanie Harris attending the meeting. However, we have performed the transportation study for the project addressing all of the multimodal aspects of movement of people into and out of the campus. The summary of the improvements is shown on this graphic. The first thing to note is inside the orange line, an extensive program of pedestrian improvements, both surrounding the campus and within the campus itself and crossing Millville Avenue. Some of those improvements will be at signalized intersections, others at unsignalized intersections, and they will all provide benefit to both the public in general and people associated with West Penn Hospital. Signal improvements include West Penn installing a new signal as shown at Liberty Avenue and Grove Street, and that'll be done in association with additional improvements on Grove Street, which will be refined as part of the project design and approval process for the garage, which has been previously mentioned by Ron. The garage shown in the diagonal purple lines configuration will be physically connected to the existing garage and will share access with it. Additionally, the city has programmed a replacement of the traffic signal at Millville Avenue and Liberty. So at both of those locations, full pedestrian amenities will be added as well as new signals. That's, oh, we also developed an extensive program of transportation demand management measures, which have been discussed at length with DOMI and have been approved. And that is the short course on the transportation study. Now back to Dusty. Next slide, please.
I think I was muted. All right, Ron, do you want to go through the approval process and all the people you met with over the two years?
Absolutely. Dusty, thank you very much. You know, I want to make mention and again, thank everyone from all those groups that we engaged with. Again, there were 11 different groups, including Councilwoman Deb Gross, who we had the opportunity to meet with and talk with, and also to address all concerns. We tried to address how it is we can incorporate concerns and dynamics to this and develop and adapt our Institutional Master Plan over the course of the last two years. Again, we had 18 meetings that you'll see noted to your right within that dynamic of how it is that we met with people in and along the journey. Of two that aren't noted here is the, also two, actually it is noted, the Planning Commission, both for non-public comment and for public comment. So again, we tried to make sure that to the constituents, we were fully involved and engaged and we've tried to be sensitive along our journey to both our neighborhood, our community, our city, our catchment area and all those that we serve. Next slide. We're proud of this billboard. It sits, you know, in Bloomfield. As you come into Bloomfield and Lawrenceville, it really denotes the fact that for the last two consecutive years, we are one of the top 100 hospitals in the nation. We are a three-time magnet facility by the American Nurses Association. We are a leapfrog A in relationship to various federal programs. We also are top-tier performance in both our patient experience quality and safety scores nationally. And then fiscally, we've actually been able to perform very well. And we want to thank both the city and the community and all those that have supported West Penn. In retrospect, seven years ago, this hospital was on the verge of closure and thanks to all those parties noted, everyone really helped us in so many ways and we are so thankful to be where we are today in this journey of success and in 172 years of legacy and care to our community, the first public hospital in Pittsburgh. Again, we are blessed, we are thankful, we are grateful and we are very proud of this sign that displays us not only for the present but to the future. And we stand before you with our Institutional Master Plan, seeking your approval and again, with great, great thanks and also too, for all that you do for us each and every day. So thank you very much.
So I will turn this back to Councilwoman Gross. Do you have any questions for our group of presenters at this point?
Okay, so no one has any more kind of just a presentation to do? It looks like I'm still the only member here. So normally as chair, I would defer to the other members, but since Councilwoman President Kayle Smith was unable to chair today and West Penn is in my district as well, she asked me to do so. So I have questions of my own and some concerns that from the, I think, neighborhood conversations that we can just share a little bit. I noticed Cindy, on one of your slides, that they kind of, I think it was the ingress and egress section of the new proposed parking garage was a blue line at the bottom of Grove where it intersects with Liberty. And it just kind of said, it says in a box, "Improvements to be determined during garage project." Do you want to speak a little bit to kind of why that's still in conversation?
Well, actually, a detailed program of improvements was determined and included in the Institutional Master Plan and in the transportation report that is part of the appendix to the IMP. For the, for the purpose of presenting a less cluttered slide and something that was more at a higher level of detail, we reduced that. I can however, tell you what the plan is for access to the garage. Presently, the purple garage that looks sort of like a bent L, that's the existing Millville Avenue garage and it has one access point on Millville Avenue and one access point on Grove Street. And Grove Street is one way in the northbound direction between Liberty and Friendship. The new garage, the new garage, which is with the diagonal purple lines, would be built adjacent to the garage, sort of tucked into the opening part of the L and part of Corday Way would be vacated with a hammerhead configuration constructed so that the private properties just to the north would have access for trash removal, deliveries, et cetera. The two garages would be physically connected so that the access points could be shared. So as not to have two access points on Grove Street, the existing garage Grove Street driveway would be permanently closed and a new one constructed into the new garage. In order to minimize intrusion into the neighborhood from vehicles going to and departing from the Grove Street garage, we propose a two-way section on Grove Street between Liberty and the access point into the Grove Street garage. And that would involve signage and bump outs and removal of, I believe about four parking spaces on the west side of the street. That would allow vehicles, and these would be largely people coming to the medical office buildings, which would be patient visitor vehicles, to approach via the main arterial at the campus, Liberty Avenue, turn left or right onto Grove Street and turn left into the garage. And then when they come back out, they could come out and go, predominantly they would turn right to return to Liberty. Although those that are local would know to turn left if they wanted to go into the neighborhood. That access point, based on discussions with the neighborhood, would be closed from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM daily as Mr. Andro has discussed with the neighbors to minimize garage vehicle activity in the evening and overnight hours next to the residential neighbors. The Millville Avenue driveway, which is what has West Penn facilities on both sides of the street, would continue to operate as it does today with full movement, entry and exit in both directions. That's, that was a lot of words to put on the slide, so that's why we have the blue bar there. But that is what's contained in the report and has been reviewed by DOMI and approved.
Thank you. That's why I asked. It was just a lot of conversations happened over the course of these two years around these issues. So for anyone who's watching, who's not, is familiar with the daily ins and outs in Bloomfield, it's highly densely populated. So there's lots of people on foot. There's lots of people living there trying to park their cars. And then we're also hosting multiple big institutions, West Penn being only one of them that's really in the center of Bloomfield. But there's a lot of, I think, really good public attention and really good neighbor input that has happened about how flow can happen safely. And really, there are some rearrangements in this master plan. Actually, Madam Clerk has a request that you take down the shared screen. I just got a message because for our viewing public, they can't see any of us talking. And that's, yeah, since she's saying thank you, because that is a little awkward for the public. We're still trying to manage our Zoom interactions in a way that is, you know, easier for the people on the other end. So thank you for that. But it was really helpful that we drill into this map because there's other things that are changing around, again, big neighborhood conversation about how people come, both employees and patients and visitors come into the hospital and leave. Could you check and touch upon that also Cindy or anyone else, but how any changes impact kind of the parking structure that you have, the structured parking garage that you have on Liberty Avenue and also the surface parking garage that you have on Liberty Avenue? Of course, it is the site of a nationally award-winning farmer's market that you are generous to provide a lease and site for. So there's a lot of neighborhood concern about that. If you could speak to that for a few minutes.
Okay. That was, that was a number of questions. I think I'll start with, with other modes first. There is public transit service available on Liberty Avenue and at the time that the new hospital building is built on the site that is right now, the Mellon Pavilion, that's on Liberty between Matilda and Millvale, the, West Penn will work with the Port Authority and with DOMI to incorporate a, an upgraded public transit, a bus stopper station that'll probably have some cover over the bus stop as well and will be integrated into the front of the building. There are also a number of bicycling opportunities and new bike racks, et cetera, which are detailed in, in the master plan and those things will, will enhance bicycle travel. Also, West Penn intends to put real-time travel advisory kiosks in the hospital building and the medical office building that would provide information about public transit and also healthy ride stations to assist patients, visitors and employees in knowing what their transportation options are. Additional initiatives, some of which have already been started, have also been included in the TDM Plan, Transportation Demand Management Plan, including opportunities for employees to work at home, to have Zoom meetings, such as what we're enjoying today, and other mechanisms to get work done that don't involve single occupant vehicles all coming to the campus. Another thing that wasn't shown on my slide is that there is a parking lot in Lawrenceville, which West Penn currently operates utilizing an employee shuttle that provides easy number to remember, 444 spaces. And that, that is a source of employee parking. The plan includes being able to bring patient, visitor and employee parkers all onto the campus or in the immediately adjacent cane lot and also the Aspen Street Garage, which is leverally located at Liberty and Aspen Street. So that there should be, there is definitely the capability of having all of those parkers park in West Penn Hospital parking facilities rather than parking on the public streets that are dependent on, by, by the residents, particularly in the residential permit parking area. The plan going forward would be to then discontinue the daily shuttle service to the Lawrenceville lot and to use that lot only under special circumstances. But the rest of the time, the parking would be handled by the hospital parking as previously described. I think I got your, your points, Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah.
Or let me know.
It's, you know, this is a deep dive into the dynamics of the neighborhood, but that is what this, you know, is about. When we're looking at the zoning for a large site, we want to respect the site, right, and where, and where it's located. So dynamics in Oakland are different than dynamics in Bloomfield, et cetera. And Bloomfielders are again, hosting on the kind of southeast. You know, we also have a thousand-car parking garage, that's UPMC Parking Garage, and sites that are right on the edge of the border there. There's a new University of Pittsburgh biomedical facility going in and what is still actually Bloomfield, that's going to be instead of empty warehouses, now hundreds. And what is still actually Bloomfield is going to be instead of empty warehouses, now hundreds of offices and all this stuff in the kind of bomb corridor. And then on the other side, just across the street on the Bloomfield line is Children's Hospital. And all of these parking dynamics overlap so on on resident's streets. So we want to kind of be mindful of that. So I, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gross, just to interject, you made mention of the farmer's market that's located, again, off of Liberty Avenue. We have no intention to affect that. We we believe, you know, in its entirety, again, we keep that space, you know, readily available for the farmer's market on Saturday and Sunday. We've also tried now to move that market so it's a all-year market. So the Aspen Garage also serves that purpose too in inclement weather. So we see a great service as it relates to the community there. Along with, you know, our food insecurity program and blending of five food banks within our school of nursing has also been our focus on to nutrition and the wellness, you know, from a nutritional perspective to our community. Again, our focus is there and it's strong, and we want to continue to move that forward. We have talked with the community, particularly those neighbors on Grove Street, about the use of the garage as Cindy depicts the access points. And we would like to establish, you know, clear times of usage so that it doesn't impact the neighborhood in a negative way. And have talked in terms of a Monday through Friday operation access from Grove Street. And also to the dynamic thereof where we would limit the hours so that to the neighborhood also too, they wouldn't, you know, be impacted by, you know, people utilizing the garage after eight o'clock at night for that section of the hospital's garage. And then again, aesthetically, we've tried to do things to guard the neighborhood, you know, from any type of light pollution and other things that, you know, again, they expressed to us. So, you know, to the traffic patterns, I think Cindy and, you know, again, our entire team tried to be very sensitive to the needs of those that are on Grove Street and in our neighborhoods. And then also too, we want to always be in partnership with our neighbors and community as to how we utilize our facilities and make sure that, again, it's not complicating factors, but helping the hospital to grow for what the community's healthcare needs are, but also to being extensively sensitive to what there's, what those areas of concern are so that we're not impacting, you know, our neighborhoods and those that we serve in a negative way.
It's a delicate balance, which we heard reflected, I think, in the neighborhood conversations, that like, how do we get, encourage people to come to the hospital in fewer cars or not in their cars, but not disincentivize them to just come in their car, but then park off-site in the neighborhood streets? And it's really a very complicated dynamic. And I know that everybody's, I just want to, you know, make the public aware that everybody is, I think, trying to solve that problem. Whether we succeed or fail is yet to be seen, but that we are we are aware of the complicated dynamics. And DOMI is working with us, and this is the parking authorities. There's overlapping issues with residential parking permit areas and the times and the hours and paid parking lots and the times and the hours and private parking lots. And we're trying to make them work in a way that we get that right balance. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of parts.
You know, Councilwoman Gross, you know, you and I were involved in a series of meetings with the community related to parking. And from those meetings, the hospital took on really two initiatives. One of which is Monday through Sunday, for those that are here on evenings and nights, they park in our existing garage for no cost. And we did that to incentivize people, to cause them to be off the neighborhood streets and most proximal to the hospital. We also thought it was a safety factor for our staff that, again, they were within the confines of the hospital campus as to how it is they, you know, both came into the hospital for work as well as how they left. The other part was that from Monday through Friday, as the off-site lot is open, that lot of which we shuttle our staff to the hospital, we also made that a no-charge lot. So we tried in those those meetings, you know, as follow-up, Councilwoman Gross, to try and incentivize our staff that they would utilize our parking facilities at a minimal impact to the neighborhood. And I think we've been reasonably successful. I don't think we've been perfect in that space. We've also tried to do a lot with our contractors too to try and cause them to utilize space, you know, that would be, again, free of charge to them and a way too that would have less burden to our neighborhoods for parking. So again, we hope that we're making, you know, inertia in that space and that we're causing it to be better for the community. Clearly, we have a ways to go. This expanded parking facility that you know here can help us with that because of the enhanced volumes. But our dynamic is to be always listening and looking towards action that makes things better.
Thank you. It is iterative because the neighborhood dynamics change also, again, with other institutions or with other just changes in the in the neighborhood destinations and residences. So to speak to that, just one more, one be one or two more things on the mobility side, transportation side is, and I've actually got a note here from a member of the public saying they've actually seen good community response about the changes you've made. How's that? I've got on a different technology platform here. I got a positive feedback, someone watching live on YouTube. So thank you. And it's almost like we're all together in a room, but we're not. We we get a lot of concerns, not just here at this location, but about crossings at specifically Matilda and Liberty. And then also Matilda in general, which is the, on your screen, it was the left-hand side, right? It's the western side of the hospital campus. And then there's some particular concerns that I think we as the city can do better with signage and maybe slowing down speeds on Friendship, right? It's that that's just a busy spot. You've got Port Authority bus stop, you've got hospital and people coming in and out of the park. I used to walk that way myself when I lived behind the hospital. People are trying to get to Liberty Avenue or back to the neighborhood from shopping. And so if you wanted to say anything special about that kind of traffic calming, I think, Cindy, you mentioned that you're working on pedestrian safety. I know that we've we've talked about that again in years past, even outside of the institutional master plan. President Andrew with me, we're talking about kind of a, you did some signage for enticing employees to take walks for cardiac health, I think it was. And so, which is, which the neighborhood is happy to host West Penn also because it really supports the vendors and the restaurants and the and the retail parts of the neighborhood. And it's nice to have them coming out.
As as noted on that slide, and there's a lot more to it in the in the transportation report, we are cognizant of the fact that pedestrian movement can be challenging in the area of the campus. And that's why West Penn has included in their master plan upgrades of pedestrian crossings at all of the intersections surrounding the campus, including a program of signage and also pavement marking plans that include high-visibility thermoplastic markings, piano key crosswalks, that kind of thing. We did look at the Matilda and Liberty intersection. And frankly, I've been looking at that for almost 30 years, hoping that someday it would meet signal warrant criteria, and it and it just doesn't. And and I'm sure that going forward, it can be looked at again, perhaps by West Penn, perhaps by others. But the state and the city don't allow us to recommend installation of signals that don't meet the the warrant criteria. And and it just, it just doesn't. However, we certainly can do better with better pavement markings and better signage. And that's all around the campus. At the two signalized, at the three signalized intersections, better markings plus signalization will certainly help pedestrian crossing. And one other place where there have been some pedestrian crossing challenges has been across Millville Avenue between the main entrance and the emergency entrance to the hospital and the gravel lot on the other side of the street. And we have recommended a rapid rectangular rapid flashing beacon installation there with which, and also with in-pavement lighting, which would be a really great pedestrian upgrade there. And it is something that will have to be worked on over time.
Thank you for that. I want to interject something. I don't want you to take you by surprise, but I just had a meeting with Zipcar this week where they showed me a map of my district and they're adding, they want to add two spots. And one of them was on your campus on South Millvale. So Zipcar is a car-sharing company where you kind of do a subscription. And then if you want to, it's like a rental car. It's not, it's not a taxi service like Uber. So just for the public, it's a rental car. But you kind of pre-apply and get a membership. And then on your phone, you like rent the car for an hour or something like that. You just walk up to the car that's parked there. It's like they have, instead of having one giant lot where you have to go to and, you know, rent the car, you've already pre-rented or subscribed, so you could just walk up to a car and unlock it and drive it away. And they want to permanently park a car, like have a permanent parking space on the street on South Millvale. Nobody knows about that? Well, I'm glad I told you. It was just a meeting today.
I am concerned because we don't have parking on Millville. And if they were looking to the garage to utilize, we would want to know about that because it would impact, again, access for others. So we are not aware, we're, I mean, I'm aware of Zipcar. My children have used it when they're at college. So I do think that it's a relatively good program. But I I can tell you that Millville would not afford them the opportunity to park. In fact, it would become cumbersome for both them, a safety issue for anyone utilizing the car. And then the other dynamic is it could restrict access to our emergency room and to other needed services. So, you know, if it's a Grove Street or Matilda discussion, you know, we're happy to help support. Millville would be a concern. And to your point, Councilwoman Gross, we work with Zone Five Command. You know, there is significant speeding concerns, both on Millville and Friendship and kind of, you know, even on Gross and Matilda. And we we are troubled by that. We also have asked the city for some support, if if possible, between Mendway and our and our hospital because that crosswalk is utilized a lot by people that urgently come to our emergency room and have to park in the lot that's proximal to the hospital emergency room and cross the street, which includes, again, pregnant women as well as those in an emergency status. So I am concerned about Millville as you address it and would ask for both your help as well as Zipcar as we continue to assess what's in their best interest and also too for how the public would have access to their, again, their vehicles for transportation.
Thank you. It, you know, perhaps they meant south of Liberty Avenue, which there are on-street parking. And that would be, I can see just on my city map on Google Maps that there are street spots there. So it's a discussion that I'm sure DOMI will help rectify. Yeah, there's street parking on the north end of it too, but we'll make sure that we talk to them about that, that, you know, we get everybody in on the same conversation.
Thank you. Again, we're supportive to the program. Just, you know, access on Millville has been a concern for us in that it is a very heavily traveled street. And again, access to the emergency room is critical for our patients.
Even as a current configuration, it's, you know, we worry about potential collisions with pedestrians and cars in every single direction, right? Even it's a very busy route coming northward from Oakland. And I know your emergency vehicles use that area as well. So, yeah, we'll have to make sure that the DOMI engineers are, you know, work on the right placement there so that there's maybe a new a new asset to be introduced to the neighborhood for mobility, but in a in a place that is safe for everyone.
Thank you for your help and support. Again, we're, we, you know, we we're endorsing, but just want to ensure the fact that, you know, those that have emergency, you know, have have quick access.
I'm also getting some fan mail about the in-pavement lighting that you mentioned. That would be fancy, Cindy. I don't mean to be too casual here, but do you know, does anyone know if we have any in the city elsewhere?
In the city itself, I don't know of an installation like that. But on Washington Road in Mount Lebanon, there is a an RRFB installation with in-pavement lighting. It starts from the side where you push the button and lights across the street. It's it's pretty cool and very noticeable by by motorists and pedestrians as well.
Yes, yes. And we are, I have to give DOMI a shout out for really working with Pittsburgh neighborhoods, the neighborhoods I represent, and especially Bloomfield, in putting in so many street changes and really kind of putting together a pot of capital funds that they have the money to make installations. We've gotten bump outs and speed humps and all kinds of other things. So it would be exciting to get even more calming there, like you said, that area around. As President Andrew said, like, you know, Matilda and Friendship and Millville and Mendway, there's a lot of crisscrossing. There's a lot of people going to and fro. I think those are most of the topics. I just would like anyone to jump in and repeat for me. I wrote down 600 beds is what your goal is. And I also want to mention that there really is so much gratitude in the neighborhood for the turnaround story that is West Penn. It was really gut-wrenching for so many people in the neighborhood. There's so many employees who work in the neighborhoods, and it's just a really important institution right there in the middle of Bloomfield that when there was a prospect of West Penn reducing or closing, it was it was really gut-wrenching and distressing for the neighborhood. To to see the hospital succeed is really important to people. And so congratulations on that. I would like to note.
Councilwoman Gross, thank you for your ongoing support. And also too of all of our community, you know, we we aren't what we are except for all of you. So we are thankful and again, very grateful. So please know that, you know, it's always a team event. And again, we are appreciative of everyone's involvement.
How many employees? I always ask this, but just so we have it here, I don't think I remember hearing it today. How many employees do you have and that would be projected with the expansion?
So currently, there is 1,800 employees. I believe the expansion was another 12% on top of that. So I think it's looking at about 2,100-ish employees would be part of that. You know, the current bed count at West Penn, it's 361 beds, we're 1.5 million square feet currently. So the dynamic is really, you know, the expansion thereof related to, you know, again, access, patient and family, you know, again, services. And then also to the component of how, you know, both our physicians and all staff would then have an expanded campus.
I want to apologize, actually. I'm going to interrupt us because I I haven't called on the three people who were waiting for comment. And that's overdue. I've been keeping them waiting for a very long time while we got through this discussion. But we can't finish the public hearing without hearing from the public. So and there are three members waiting. So I'm going to ask everybody to mute, and I'm going to need our technical staff to help me call on the public commenters who have a note here somewhere. The first speaker I have registered is Ikana Hau Makina. If I could have some technical support, I'm calling on Ikana Hau Makina. There you are. I'm going to mute myself. You have three minutes. I don't have a way of of unmuting you. I'm sorry, is Ikana Hau Makina?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. If my three minutes can start now, that would be great. I took my video where I seen myself. Okay. I would like to speak on West Penn Hospital expanding. I just want to make sure, my my title is Ikana Hau Makina, the Grand Inca of the Aroclaw Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I want to make sure in this inclusion that Indigenous people, Aboriginal American people, are at the forefront of receiving quality of care at your facility. According to the American Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People, we have the right to belong. And we have we have the collective and individual right of the highest attainable standard of physical, mental, and spiritual health. Our people have the right to our own practices. We also have the right to use and be protected within medical facilities, the use of our own medicinal plants, animals, minerals, and other natural resources for medicinal use in our ancestral land and territories. Hospitals such as West Penn Allegheny Health Network shall take measures to prevent and prohibit our people from being subjects of research programs, biological and medical experimentation, or sterilization without our free, prior, and informed consent. And these services shall be rendered at no charge as you are doing business on our land. We want to make sure that West Penn Hospital are taking those corrective measures to ensure the rights of Indigenous people. We also have the right to not be discriminated upon, to not experience discrimination in the medical field. As you have taken a Hippocratical oath, all of you have taken this oath. To coordinate with us, you shall promote our intercultural systems and practices in the medical healthcare system. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Marsha Kraus. Marsha Kraus. Director Finer, do we still see Marsha Kraus on the line? I don't see them, Marsha, in the constituent list, but some, or the participant list in the webinar, but-
Marsha is on mute. I can see her.
Can you see her?
Yes.
Director Finer, is there any helpful directions for helping someone unmute? Is there a special, like keystroke they have to do on their phone? Or is it a button?
We've asked twice to unmute.
How do you do unmute? Is it just a click? Is she on Zoom? Because I've, when I've called into public meetings, I actually was only given a phone number. And then I had to do like star six or something, even though the, the rest of the, the webinar was on Zoom. As a public commenter, I was only on phone call.
It is star six to unmute.
Hello? That works.
Hello?
Hello, I can hear you now.
Okay. It was supposed to be my husband, not me. It was actually my husband, Regis Kraus. I don't know how it got to me. And his number is different than mine. He was the one that was supposed to talk. So I don't know-
If he's there, you can put him on the line. I, I had, I have each of you listed separately. So-
Yeah, yeah. His, his number is different than mine. So I'm going to go away and hopefully he will get on.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Regis Kraus is the last person I've got on my list. So Mr. Kraus, if you can also try to unmute yourself, you can have three minutes.
Hi, this is Regis Kraus. Can you hear me?
We got you. Yep, loud and clear.
That's great. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk. You'll soon realize I'm not real polished at this. Fortunately, I don't have to do this in person. But we live, my family lives literally right next to the proposed building. If you looked at the model, we're pretty much surrounded by it. But to give you a little history, that's why I'm against this. One of the reasons, you know, it's personal. With these, there's two houses left on the whole block. 25 years ago, West Penn bought all the properties except these two houses, which have four families in them. This, our home was built by my father-in-law and my wife's grandfather. It's always been in the family. So this is real personal, what I'm saying here. We've raised our family here. This is the only home our daughter has lived in, other than when she went to school. Our son recently moved to California. He's, he's a nurse out there saving lives. We planning on staying here. But if you see the model, it doesn't even look like we'll see any sunlight. You know, and I'm not holding out for more money. I'm not like that. We're happy to stay here. I'd like to stay here forever. We love Bloomfield. For, frankly, I, I don't know what we'd do or where we'd go if we have to move. And looking at the plan, we're from our backyard, 15 feet away is going to be a five-story brick wall. It just doesn't seem right. And on another viewpoint is, I don't think it's medically necessary. If you listen to the West Penn's presentation at the Planning Commission, they had Mr. Andros, the president talk, and architect talk. And like today, the parking traffic, no one said it's really medically necessary, that it's going to be like cutting-edge technology. I think Dr. Johnson spoke, which, you know, I can see improving the hospital. But I think you can do that from what you have. I worked at Presby and they closed one unit, and then they'd remodel it, and then the same thing to the next unit. They didn't steamroll the neighborhood like West Penn is doing. That's about all I have to say. But I think everyone on this call, if it was your home, you know, we have a nice view. Some of the hospital or the neighborhood, we sit on the porch. Bloomfield's awesome. People riding their bikes, walking, jogging, you know, walking their dog.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, you have only three minutes until the microphones turn off. But the, there is more opportunity moving forward from here. This is the official public hearing on just this topic. But the next step for any zoning matters that require public hearing is that it comes up on City Council's Standing Committee agenda. And we're not sure. It'll be up to the Chair of Land Use, Bobby Wilson, from District One, when this is added to a Wednesday. Usually, it's a Wednesday discussion. If it's next week, that would be Monday, the day before Election Day. So watch out for that. We take public comment at every Standing Committee meeting. And then there would have to be a final vote. And those are usually on Tuesdays. We would have to have public comment and opportunity for discussion there. So this is, there are more, will be more opportunities. I think I have exhausted all of the kinds of questions that I had come in from constituents. And I think I had, had that comment as well, that I believe there are, there are ongoing discussions with the properties that are in the EMI zoning, but that are not owned by West Penn. So I know that that's something that is unresolved. And I'm glad to the residents were able to call in today. So I don't see, I don't think any other council members have joined us. Is there any other further comment from any members of our panel from zoning or from the West Penn team?
Councilwoman Gross, I just wanted to thank you again for the hearing and for taking all the comments from our team and the public. And I just want to assure you that West Penn is always willing to work with its neighbors. So thank you very much.
So Dusty, if I could also, again, Councilwoman Gross, and to all of the City Council, we want to thank you for, again, this opportunity to present our institutional master plan. You know, to the team here, they've worked diligently over the course of the last two years. And also, too, to the Planning Commission, we thank you for all your counsel and advice. And also, too, your, your concepts and also the dynamic of intervention as to how we could make our plan better as we continue to move forward. Just to conclude with two more points, if I might, to the comments of the community, please know that we are always listening. And, you know, what is presented here is a conceptual plan to what we believe could be the future, both on a 10 and 25-year perspective. We are, we are always engaging, right? You know, our, our community are also those that utilize our services and trust. We're sensitive to that, again, to what you had noted, Councilwoman Gross. You know, the community has been there for us in all ways. We want to make sure, too, that that partnership is always addressed and maintained. And as we go to further steps of the development, we would always want to incorporate the community in that planning, in that aspect of how it is they help us with design and how it is that we continue to move forward. So it's, again, you know, a good neighborly perspective that West Penn and the Allegheny Health Network and Highmark Health takes with all those that are in and around our, our campus and our hospital. The last note I would like to, to bring forward, I'm going to be stepping down from my position as President and CEO of West Penn Hospital. It, you know, there are elements of that physically that will happen very soon. There are components of how I'll stay on as an advisor through till the end of this year. I want to thank both City Council, the city, and all of the community that we serve for this wonderful opportunity that I've had to be President and CEO here at West Penn. Again, it's, it's, for me, it's been an incredible career and personal experience. And I've enjoyed meeting so many, including you, Councilwoman Gross, that's helped me personally so much professionally as West Penn's continued to map forward in its success. Dr. Brian Johnson, who's to my left, who currently has a mask on, but you'll recognize him. Dr. Brian Johnson, not only will be, will be our Chief Medical Officer, but will be the interim CEO and President as the search moves forward. So again, I want to express my greatest gratitude to everyone. It's been a wonderful opportunity to serve. And again, you're in the best hands going forward. Again, great team here. You know, they are always focused on mission and access. And again, the goals of how it is that we best serve our community. And again, Dr. Johnson will be fulfilling that role as the search continues. And I've kind of nudged him that he needs to throw his hat in the ring, which he's graciously agreed to do. So anyway, thank you all very much. It's been an honor and a privilege and a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Best wishes to you, President Andros, as you move forward. And it's been nice working with you as well. Since, yeah, since I'm the only council member here, I will move to adjourn and declare us adjourned. Thank you.